Order tonight's May 8, 2023, regular meeting of Plymouth Township Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming tonight. We'll have a few resolutions, but first, is there any public comment on the agenda itself tonight? Seeing none, we will go, tonight, we will begin with our Citizens Police Academy Resolution, and I will hand that over to Ms. Visio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Plymouth Township Police Department, in its continuing effort to forge strong and lasting bonds with the community, initiated a Citizens Police Academy in 2022. And whereas five members of our community rose to the challenge of this 10-week, hands-on course of study. And whereas between the 9th of March in 2023 and the 4th of May in 2023, Citizens Academy students completed an intense course of study, including patrol activities, criminal investigation, traffic safety and crash investigation, forensics, first aid, use of force, and firearm safety. And whereas the Plymouth Township Police Department is grateful for the dedication and enthusiasm demonstrated by the graduating class of the Citizens Police Academy. Now therefore be it resolved that Stephen Berta, Rebecca Fleming, Mark Gilman, Mary Ann Gilman, and Margaret Wong are hereby commended for the successful completion of the Plymouth Township Citizens Police Academy. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to each member of this graduating class. Adopted this 8th day of May 2023 by Plymouth Township Council, Christopher G. Monero, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Visio. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Any comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote to approve the resolution. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. If our graduates would step forth, then we will hand them their certificates, please. Congratulations.
(applause)
Everybody get side in this one. On me on three, one, two, and three, big smiles, one more time. Beautiful, thank you. Good job.
John, just a quick question. When would members of the community be able to find out information about the next opportunity to do this?
More? When do we post?
Usually November.
Okay.
Because when the days be bad.
Thank you. All right. Next tonight, we have a 20 Years of Service Resolution for David Phillips, and I will hand that over to Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas David Phillips has served the Plymouth Township Police Department faithfully since May the 5th, 2003, and has therefore completed 20 years of service. And whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to formally recognize the diligent and valuable service rendered by David Phillips and publicly express its appreciation. Now therefore be it resolved that David Phillips is congratulated for completion of 20 years of service with the Plymouth Township Police Department, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to David Phillips. Adopted this 8th day of May, 2023, Plymouth Township Council, Christopher G. Monero, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote to approve this 20 Years of Service Resolution. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Congratulations, Mr. Phillips. Come up. (applause)
Big smiles, three, two. All right. Congratulations.
All right, we have another 20 Years of Service Resolution. This one is for Brian Wagner, and I'll hand that to Mr. Whitney.
Whereas Brian Wagner has served the Plymouth Township Police Department faithfully since May 5th, 2003, and has therefore completed 20 years of service. And whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to formally recognize the diligent and valuable service rendered by Brian Wagner and publicly express its appreciation. Now therefore be it resolved that Brian Wagner is congratulated for completion of 20 years of service with the Plymouth Township Police Department, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Brian Wagner. Adopted this 8th day of May, 2023, Plymouth Township Council, Christopher G. Monero, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
There's a motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote to approve this resolution for Brian Wagner. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Congratulations. (applause) I'm gonna move some, one item or two items up on the agenda. We're gonna go down to police and public safety and do that next, so that many of you don't have to stay too long. Our first item under police and public safety for this month is a resolution for National Police Week, and I will hand that to Mr. Whitney.
All right. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week. And whereas Plymouth Township desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own police officers, now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby proclaims the week of May 14th to 20th, 2023, to be Police Week, and calls upon all citizens in this community to especially honor and show their sincere appreciation for the police officers of this township. Be it further resolved that Plymouth Township Council likewise expresses its gratitude to the men and women in uniform who uphold the law, safeguard the citizenry, and make Plymouth Township a desirable place in which to live and work. Adopted this 8th day of May, 2023, Plymouth Township Council, Christopher G. Monero, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
There is a motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? On behalf of council, to Chief Merciades and all the officers in attendance tonight, and those who are not, we sincerely appreciate, not just this week, but certainly all year, the service you give to our residents and to keep our township safe, so thank you very much. Is there any comment or question from the audience on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote to approve this resolution for National Police Week. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. We have one more, but it's a big one. Family is front row here, so we gotta... In the National Police Week Resolution, it was mentioned the valor, service, and dedication of police officers, and tonight, the Plymouth Township Police Department is honoring their Officer of the Year, and I will hand that over to Ms. Visio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In recognition of the Police Officer of the Year for 2022, whereas Officer Andrew Murdoch has performed diligently and faithfully the duties and services required of him by the Township of Plymouth, and whereas the performance of Officer Andrew Murdoch was in the highest standard of the law enforcement profession. And whereas a vote has been taken by the Police Department's supervisory staff to recognize Officer Andrew Murdoch and his outstanding contributions, now therefore be it resolved that Officer Andrew Murdoch is hereby commended for his diligent and valuable service. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Officer Andrew Murdoch. Adopted this 8th day of May, 2023, Plymouth Township Council, by Christopher G. Monero, Chairman. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept this resolution?
There's a motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Any comments or questions on this resolution? Anything from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote to approve the resolution of Andrew Murdoch as Police Officer of the Year. Ms. Visio?
Hardly in favor.
Ms. Bandish?
Very much in favor.
Mr. Whitney?
Most certainly in favor.
Chair votes, the pride of Rondome Drive, in favor. Congratulations, Andrew Murdoch. (applause)
Chris? Chris, is his family here? What?
And at this time, I would ask, Chief Merciades has some comments he'd like to make on the police resolutions.
Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Plymouth Township's exceptional police officers. Every year, our supervisory and command staff gather to carefully select the one officer who has distinguished themselves above all others. This undertaking grows more difficult each year, as our officers repeatedly raise the bar for committed service to the community. Plymouth Township's 2022 Officer of the Year was selected not for one particular event, but for the high standards consistently exhibited over the course of the year. Officer Andrew Murdoch came to us in July of 2020, after having proudly served five years in the Navy, completed a combat tour in Afghanistan, and distinguished himself as a Philadelphia police officer for four years. We are immensely proud of Officer Murdoch's valued achievements and are inspired when considered together with the determination and daring displayed by the women and men who dearly serve by his side. Please join me as I congratulate Officer Andrew Murdoch for preserving the ideals established for our agency and for upholding Plymouth Township's tradition of excellence in policing. Thank you. And I would add that in commemoration of Police Week, we acknowledge all the dedicated men and women who keep us safe and applaud their steadfast efforts. Thank you, all of you.
We're gonna move one more resolution up on the agenda, and that's under our Public Works on our agenda. If the, if the police and our Public Works Department, without a doubt, are two of the prides of our township and certainly some of our residents' favorite aspects of Plymouth, so it's only fitting that we do these two together. So next on the agenda, we will go to our National Public Works Week Resolution, and I will hand that over to Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the services provided in Plymouth Township are an integral part of residents' everyday lives, and whereas the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life for Plymouth Township residents greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the members of the Plymouth Township Public Works Department are vital to the efficient operation and maintenance of township programs, including sanitary and storm sewers, streets, snow removal, solid waste and recycling collection, parks, buildings, township grounds, and township vehicles, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of National Public Works Week, May 21st through the 27th, 2023, all members of the Public Works Department be commended for their performance, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to the Public Works Department. Adopted this 8th day of May, 2023, Plymouth Township Council, Christopher G. Monero, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
So, I don't know who to pick here. Second from Mr. Whitney. Are there any comments or questions from council?
I can only, would like to say that I have found myself bragging endlessly about our Public Works Department. We are really kind of alone in Montgomery County of having guys that are just, they just go so far above and beyond, that it always, it never fails to amaze me. We get letters every month praising that, the work that they do, from just a woman that wrote to say her husband was trying to, struggling to change a tire. They stopped during their collection, helped him, changed the tire, got back on the truck, waved goodbye, and took off. It's not often that you find that, so we do very much appreciate your work.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. Any additional comments or questions? Comments or questions from the audience?
Richard Schickling from Boulder Road Plymouth Meeting.
Mr. Schickling, sorry, just have to step closer to the microphone. Get you on the official record.
Richard Schickling from Boulder Road Plymouth Meeting. I moved here 23 years ago. I'm very happy with the police service, and the public work service is outstanding. We get a little grumble with, you hear people that say they raise taxes. We get our money's worth. We're very happy with our situation here in Plymouth Township. Thank you for the good work.
Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote to approve this resolution for National Public Works Week. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. (applause) Yeah, chairs later. Now while I, we sometimes take offense to people leaving in the middle of our meetings, we understand that most of you, many of you were here for those presentations, so if anybody who was here for these resolutions would like to get up and exit, we'll give you a couple minutes to do so. But you're more than welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Yeah, really? You're announcing, coming, directing. And you'll be back.
Thank you.
I think there's a pretty good chance you're gonna repeat again. Not on the police and public safety. That's where I think you're gonna miss.
They're getting better.
I think we're just as likely to repeat something as...
That's right. Oh, you know what he's gonna do? He's gonna skip highways and share one.
I'm gonna get a hot chocolate. Extra marshmallows.
And then buy extra marshmallows.
Already have.
Extra, extra.
I normally... I have never had something that attacked me twice in a row. And this one, much more difficult. I'm one, two toes away. A snake, a zebra.
Okay, just thank you everybody for resumption here. Two announcements. An executive session was held on April 10th, 2023, and an executive session was also held on May 2nd, 2023. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the workshop meeting of April 3rd and the regular meeting of April 10th. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. I'll make a motion for the approval of departmental reports and bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, under administration, we have this National Opioid Settlement Ratification, and I would like to make a motion that Plymouth Township participate in the National Opioid, the ratification of this National Opioid Settlement. What this does is provides funds from this settlement to the township, to the police department, for service towards education and training and resources for, related to the opioid crisis, and I would ask council, or I will make a motion to approve this settlement ratification, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down, back to Public Works and Sewer, we have our Highway Materials Bid Award. Ms. Visio?
This is in relation to our 2023 street paving project for mill and overlay. Bids for this 2023 street paving project were opened on Thursday, April 27th. We have, the low bid on the project was from Glasgow Incorporated, $348,110, again for pavement, milling, and overlay, and I would make a motion that we award the bid to this bidder.
There's a motion from Ms. Visio for this bid award. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Down to engineering, Mr. Manai. Anything tonight? Thank you. Hey, we're going down to subdivision and land development plans that are currently under review. First one is for Connaughtale Auto Group, 906 Ridge Pike. Mr. Whitney?
Regardless to the property of 906 Pike, Connaughtale Auto Group is requesting a six-month extension of time. That will be until November 20th, 2023. I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
Okay, there's a motion to grant the six-month extension for Connaughtale from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, under the action items, is 906 Ridge Pike, Royal Farms, and I will hand that one to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby approve the land development plan prepared by Robert E. Blue, Consulting Engineers for Two Farms, Inc., dated August 3rd, 2022, last revised March 28, 2023, consisting of Sheets Numbers 1 through 39, proposing to construct a Royal Farms Gas and Convenience Store for a property located at 906 Ridge Pike, Land Development Application 22-1, in accordance with said plans, under and subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner developer shall execute a public improvement agreement and memorandum of public improvement agreement as required by the subdivision and land development ordinance, and pay all applicable fees and assessments, including but not limited to the following: A, impact fee for transportation capital improvements under Ordinance Number 1426 of 2004, as amended, said impact fee to be determined by Carol Engineering Corporation; B, a recreation fee of $5,809.96; C, a sanitary and storm sewer outfalls in the amount of $6,200, based on 62 new parking spaces; D, a sewer connection fee to be paid in accordance with the fee and schedule in effect at the time of payment; Number two, that the owner developer shall comply with the requirements, comments set forth in the April 20th, 2023 Review Letter of Woodrow &amp; Associates, the Township Landscape Architect, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that the waivers are granted herein to the satisfaction and approval of the Township Landscape Architect; Three, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements, comments as set forth in the March 14th, 2023 Report of Carol Engineering Corporation, the Township Traffic Engineer, attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of the said traffic engineer. The Township Traffic Engineer is still reviewing the traffic impact study, and the owner developer will need to comply with any further comments; Four, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements, comments as set forth in the May 8th, 2023 Report of Carol Engineering Corporation, the Township Sanitary Sewer Engineer, attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of the said sanitary sewer engineer; Five, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements, comments set forth in the April 4th, 2023 Report of Woodrow &amp; Associates, the Township Engineer, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted herein to the satisfaction and approval of said Township Engineer; Six, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements, comments set forth in the April 26th, 2023 Report of Joel Rowe, zoning officer, attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of said zoning officer; Seven, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements, comments set forth in the September 16th, 2022 Report of Suburban Lighting Consultants, the Township Lighting Consultant, to the satisfaction and approval of the said lighting consultant; Eight, that the owner developer shall obtain all required permits and approvals from the sewer authority, the DEP Sewage Facility Planning Module waiver, the water company having jurisdiction over the property, and a highway occupancy permit from Plymouth Township, and a highway occupancy permit from Montgomery County if any is needed; Nine, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the September 12th, 2022 Report of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and the May 3rd, 2023 Report of the Planning Agency, each attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of the said, afore said Township zoning officer; Ten, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to list all waivers granted and notes required by this resolution; Eleven, prior to the issuance of any permits, all outstanding legal, engineering, and ame- all outstanding legal, engineering, and administrative fees applicable to this land development must be paid by the owner developer; Twelve, this approval is subject to the fulfillment of all of the foregoing conditions in their entirety, and no permit shall issue, nor shall any development take place on the property unless and until all such conditions are fulfilled. Further resolved, that the owner developer shall be granted the following waiver from the terms of the Plymouth Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinants of 1980, as amended: A, Article 5, Section 5182(c), from the landscaping requirements, that landscape plan shall be prepared, sealed, and signed by a landscape architect registered in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania; B, Article 5, Section 5185ac, from the requirements for three-foot minimum, three-inch? Three-inch minimum caliper street trees; Number C, Article 5, Section 518f1a, from the requirement to provide steep slope landscaping for disturbed areas of the site with slopes in excess of one foot vertical to four foot horizontal; D, Article 5, Section 5185h1c, from the requirement that a maximum of 15 spaces is permitted in a row without a landscape island of 10 feet wide, and that parking lot islands shall contain not less than 200 square feet of shrubs and ground cover and one shade tree; E, Article 5, Section 5185h1d, from the requirement that raised planter islands shall be placed at the end of each row of parking spaces, which begins or terminates at an internal circulation drive; F, Article 5, Section 5185h1b, from the requirement that a minimum of 10% of parking areas over 4,000 square feet shall be devoted to landscaping; G, Article 5, Section 5012a, regarding an obligation to show existing features outside of the project limits; H, Article 5, Section 502.3k, regarding parking lots with more than 30 spaces shall not have a grade exceeding 3%; and I, Article 5, Section 50230 or 3O, regarding the exception of where a sidewalk area or boundary of parking lots is appropriately defined and protected by permanently installed curbing, tire bumpers shall be installed to prevent vehicle overhang on any sidewalk area and any area beyond the boundaries of the parking lot. Duly presented and adopted by the Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 8th day of May, 2023, Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Manero, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution for 906 Ridge Pike, which is the approval of the land development plan? A motion from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney, comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions tonight from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is 502 West Germantown Pike. Ms. Visio?
Mr. Chair, I have a letter from Janet Casman on behalf of Plymouth Meeting KPG 3 LLC, regarding 502 West Germantown Pike, with a request to extend the deadline by which the township must render its decision on the subdivision and land development application. The extension would be through July 1st, 2023, and I make a motion that we accept this extension.
There's a motion from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to projects currently under construction, we have some escrow releases. First one is for the Tamarus subdivision on Fairfield Road Number 1. Mr. Whitney?
I have a letter here from Mike Manai of Woodrow &amp; Associates indicating that at this time, based on field observations of work completed to date, they have found that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $143,250.25. I would make a motion that we release this amount.
Okay, a motion from Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
The chair votes in favor. Next is for the Tamarus subdivision, Fairfield Road Number 2.
Again, from Mike Manai of Woodrow &amp; Associates, that they believe that work performed to date by, for construction at the Tamarus subdivision on Fairfield Road, in the sum of $47,836.0, that that can be released at this time. So I would make a motion that we release that amount.
Okay, there's a motion from Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio, comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Final item for projects under construction is the Corsair Default Resolution, and I will hand that over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Manero. This is a resolution of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, to declare Corsair USA NJ LLC in default of its land development approval. Whereas the Township of Plymouth is a duly organized home rule municipality existing and operating in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas pursuant to Section 301 of the Home Rule Charter, all powers of the township are vested in and exercised by a council, including the power to make and adopt ordinances and resolutions consistent with the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth and the Home Rule Charter, and whereas the township previously approved the final land development plan for 627 Old Elm Street as prepared for Corsair USA NJ LLC, with such land development plan included, including a proposal for a three-lot subdivision, and whereas a final land development plan required the owner developer to prepare and comply with landscaping plans and post-escrow related to said landscaping plans, and whereas more than four years have passed since the homes built in relation to the final land development plan have been completed, yet the landscaping was never completed by the owner developer as required, and whereas the fair to complete the required landscaping places owner developer in default of the land development approval, and whereas the township seeks to declare owner developer in default and use the remaining $10,996.50 in escrow to complete the land development project. Now be it resolved, the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, does hereby declare the owner developer to be in default, and hereby further declares that the township shall use the $10,996.50 remaining in escrow to complete the project, ordained and enacted by the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, this 8th day of May, 2023. Council of Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Manero, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution for the default for Corsair?
So.
A motion from Ms. Bandish, there's a second from Ms. Visio. Any comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to zoning, the items for the zoning hearing board for this month are continued hearings from previous months, so there are three that will be held Wednesday, May 15th, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM. The subjected, the subjects of the zoning continued hearings are 305 Killiebeggs Lane, Pets Supplies Plus, and pre, and again, that's on May 15th, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM.
It is May 15th, it's Monday, not Wednesday.
Monday.
Monday, it is May 15th.
Got it. I should have caught that.
Yeah.
Moving down to parks and recreation, our upcoming events announcements. Ms. Bandish?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Program Spotlight set the Greater Plymouth Community Center, right here, for May of 2023. Summer Day Camp and One Week Specialty Camps registration is now being accepted. I hope everybody enjoyed the community yard sale at, and set the Montgomery County Community College since it was Saturday, May 6th. On Tuesday, May 18th, there will be birding for beginners at the Harriet Wetherell Park. Tuesday, June 6th, outdoor boot camp. On Thursday, June 8th, barbecue bingo. On Thursday, Wednesday, June 14th, there'll be an outdoor movie called The Bad Guys. And Wednesday, June 21st, a concert featuring Fusebox. Something new on Friday, June 23rd, is a summer pool party. On Wednesday, June 28th, we're going to have Sonic the Hedgehog 2 for an outdoor movie. And Save the Date National Night Out is going to be, is going to occur on Tuesday, August 1st. So sponsors are needed for movies and concerts. Anyone who would like to sponsor one, we ask you to get in touch with us ASAP. More details are available in our brochure, through the app, on our website, in social media, or you can call the community center here at 610-277-4312.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. And announcement for upcoming Plymouth Township Day, Ms. Visio?
Thank you. Plymouth Township Day is coming up on Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at East Plymouth Valley Park. It is an event not to be missed. Some of the things happening at Plymouth Township Day, something new, 501 Legion Stormtroopers, there'll also be inflatables, community groups, crafts, local businesses. There'll be a Plymouth Little League concession stand, there will be street-side barbecue food trucks, a remote-controlled monster truck demo of some sort, I imagine, miniature golf, Plymouth Township Police K-9 demonstrations, and a VAGO, or also known as cornhole tournament. You can purchase a wristband at the GPCC before 6:00 to save, I think particularly for those inflatables. And if you're looking for any additional details, you can find them in brochures, on our app, our website, or social media, or by calling 610-277-4312. And we'll see all of you there.
Thank you, Ms. Visio. Moving down to miscellaneous and old business, we have some citizen board vacancy announcements to share again. Mr. Whitney?
All right. All residents wishing to serve on the following citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the township manager at 700 Bell Bar Road, Plymouth, PA 19462, or via email, kwise@plymouthtownship.org. The following citizen board positions are open. First, we have the Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board. There are three positions open there. The Historical Architectural Review Board, one position open there. Human Relations Commission, Parks, Recreation, and Shade Tree Advisory Board, and the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitney. At this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint a newest member of the Parks, Recreation, and Shade Tree Advisory Board. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Harshell Dear to the Parks, Recreation, and Shade Tree Advisory Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio, comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Anything additional from council tonight? Is there any audience participation tonight? Again, we just ask that if you want to share anything, please come up to the microphone, state your name and whether you are a township resident. You can, yep.
Hello to the council and community members. My name is Rennie Volby. I'm a resident of Plymouth Township residing in Board 31. I'm making the following statement for your consideration and for public record. Our community has recently seen an increase of unhoused individuals throughout the Norristown, Plymouth Meeting, and White Marsh areas. We see folks asking for assistance in the Metroplex parking lot, the doors of Wawa, and in parking lots behind local businesses. Last spring, when our neighbor cut back some of their trees on their property, my husband and I noticed an orange tent in the woods across from our house. We learned soon after that this served as temporary housing for at least one young man, who appeared to have been there for a long time. Our understanding is that the police keep their hands tied with so few county housing resources to offer, the only guidance being to move to a new spot where they are less likely to be noticed. I have to say, it felt a little unnerving to me as a resident to hear that the best approach we've got was to push these folks down the creek for a different neighbor to eventually notice. This isn't the type of life I'd want for my neighbor, whether you are the neighbor residing in the next home down or the neighbor residing in the tent. With the recent closing of the only shelter in Montgomery County with no plan in place to support our community to address housing instability, I understand there have been more tent communities forming around Norristown and Pottstown. Recently, there was a trail sweep that pushed these individuals out, disposed of their belongings, and again, left no sign for support in place. We can see that pushing the problem to the next town is not a sustainable solution. On behalf of the Colonial Area Anti-Racism and Social Equity Alliance, or CARSI, our partner Pastor Alex Evangelista of the Church on the Mall, Interfaith Council, and other community organizations, we are here today to advocate and voice our support for a unified plan in Plymouth that involves more affordable and subsidized housing units for our neighbors. I'd like to share a brief excerpt from the Plymouth Township 2040 Comprehensive Plan, down on page 27. The Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code requires that all municipal comprehensive plans include a plan to meet the housing needs of present and anticipated future residents, including the accommodation of expected new housing in different dwelling types and at appropriate densities for households of all income levels. In general, providing the range of permitted residential dwelling types and densities creates opportunities for potential residents with a range of household incomes to find housing that meets their needs within a community. I'd like to specifically share a few of our long-term goals. We'd like to explore the possibility of creating a voting ordinance within Plymouth, requiring that multifamily developments offer a certain percentage of affordable housing to our residents. We'd like to specifically ask the solicitors present if this is something Plymouth Township is legally able to establish. What is the process, and is the council open to this idea? We'd also like to see affordable housing be included in the unified plan for the Plymouth Meeting Mall area. We propose asking for Keystone's plan for the apartments and Prey's plans for the old IKEA parcel, and allot a specific percentage of affordable housing units within them. We would like this to be available to citizens of all ages. Given the location and the population, we expect the residents to utilize the existing SEPT system and therefore not impact the car traffic around this area. They will also be able to connect easily to their places of employment, which will also help grow our local economy as well as provide stability and financial independence for these once unhoused individuals. Finally, a question. What is the council's opinion on working towards this issue? What are the important perspectives to consider? What is your willingness to work with us to make Plymouth a safe and accessible place for all to live? In exploring solutions to this problem, I encourage all of us to consider what type of community we want to be. Are we a community who others and believes that only people of a certain culture or income level can live comfortably here? Or are we a community that can offer opportunities to all citizens and families attempting to share in our values of creating a safe and healthy community to live and work? It is our hope that municipalities around us can share similar values and work together to create housing solutions so that this work doesn't fall disproportionately on the township. I hope we can engage in constructive conversation and take action here in Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Volby. I just have one quick follow-up question. In addition to your group exploring affordable housing, do you also look for elderly affordable housing? Or do you focus more specifically on, or have you looked at more specifically the issue of affordable housing in general? Just a curiosity question.
Yeah, our understanding is there is some elderly housing for seniors available in Country and White Marsh, and there's very little for folks who do not, are not elderly. So we feel that this is the population that is most underserved at the moment.
Thank you. And just a question for Mr. Clark, since it was brought up. Does the township have the authority to require
or to, via ordinance, require a number of affordable housing units when approving a general residential development?
You are allowed to set certain requirements, but the MPC does not allow us to require anyone to say a specific number have to be at a certain income level. There, it gets a little complicated when you, if you want to start doing certain programs to incentivize people to do that. You can get, some communities have done like density bonuses where attractive land may only be able to have 30 units, let's say, but you can tell them if you're willing to dedicate 10 units